Given by Pastor Julie Stevenson from First Christian Church of Beaumont. Everyone, if you'd please silence your phones and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I invite you into prayer. Gracious God, we thank you for all the ways that you have blessed this city. We humbly come before you today and ask for your continued blessings on our city, on this council, and in this meeting. We know there is much to be done to make this city all that it can be for its citizens today and in the future. Please make this time be productive, may our intentions be pure, and may our words be kind. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Felschaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel Absinthe and Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Before we move into our proclamations, I would like to acknowledge the Port Arthur Independent School District students that are here from Memorial High School, Wilson Early College, and Memorial Ninth Grade Academy. Thank y'all all for being here. Today, we have two proclamations. Tina Broussard, City Clerk, and Councilman Chris Durio will read the proclamations. After they're read, I will announce your names so you and the members of the group can come to the podium, shake hands, and then we'll take pictures afterwards. In the first proclamation, we'll be recognizing March as Women's History Month.
Whereas March is National Women's History Month, and the National Women's History Alliance has designated the theme for Women's History Month 2024 as Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And whereas this theme recognizes the invaluable contributions of women who have dedicated themselves to advocating for equity, diversity, and inclusion in all aspects of society. And whereas on January 13, 1913, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded by 22 women at Howard University in Washington DC with a focus on education and public service. The 22 bold founders of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority's first service project was the Women's Suffrage Parade on March 3, 1913, held in support of a constitutional amendment that guaranteed women the right to vote. The sorority endured threats, racial epithets, and violence. And whereas the women were spat on, pushed, and repeatedly struck by men, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated's member, Ida B. Wells Barnett, would go on to found the first African-American women's suffrage organization, and she and others crusade against lynching. And whereas today, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is one of four college sororities for African-American women and is the largest African-American Greek-letter sorority in the world. Since its founding, more than 350,000 women of all racial and ethnic backgrounds hold membership in Delta Sigma Theta. The sorority currently has 1,000 collegiate and alumni chapters located in the United States, Canada, Japan, Tokyo, and Okinawa, Germany, the Virgin Islands, Bermuda, the Bahamas, Jamaica, and the Republic of Korea. And whereas Beaumont Alumni Chapter was chartered on May 16, 1942, as Beta Nuve Sigma by 21 enduring young women since 1942, the members of officers of the Beaumont Alumni Chapter have demonstrated a relentless commitment to make a positive impact on the lives of men, women, and children of the city of Beaumont through various community service projects. Now therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Women's History Month and encourage our communities and organizations to celebrate the achievements of women who have championed equity, diversity, and inclusion, and reaffirm our commitment to advocating these principles in our society. Accordingly, the mayor has here and to set his hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed this day, March 5, 2024.
And at this time, if Mrs. Michelle Turner, President of the Beaumont Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, would come forward with everyone else, y'all are all welcome. Congratulations. 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 Kevin. Congratulations. Congratulations. Y'all look so spiffy. Good to see you.
Congratulations.
You. Good to see you. Good to see you. Congratulations. Good seeing you again. Well, good to see you.
All right. Everybody look over here. We got a good, big group today, too. All right, y'all, one, two, and three. Let's get one more. One, two, and three. Awesome. Thank y'all.
Mayor West, City Council, and citizens of Beaumont, it is my honor and privilege to stand before you today on behalf of the Beaumont Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and we're very honored that you recognized us today as one of the organizations that has been in the forefront of making a difference in our community. And again, thank you very much.
In the second proclamation, recognizing the 105th celebration of the American Legion. And Councilman Chris Durio will be sharing that.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the American Legion was founded on the four pillars: care for veterans, a strong national defense, Americanism, and children and youth. And whereas on September 19, 1919, the United States Congress federally chartered American Legion as a patriotic veterans organization, focusing on service to veterans, service members, and communities, the Legion evolved from a group of war-weary veterans of World War I into the one of the most influential nonprofit groups in the United States today. Today, membership stands at over 2 million and more than 13,000 posts worldwide. And whereas the American Legion has played a role in leading initiatives and breakthroughs that have affected the lives of Americans in every community, and whereas on March 15, 1919, American Legion Centennial Day will celebrate the 105th anniversary of the American Legion, which was founded on March 15, 2019, at the American Club near Place de la Concorde in Paris, France, by members of the American Expeditionary Force. Now therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby recognize March 15, 2024, American Legion 105th Birthday Celebration in Beaumont, and take this time to remember the sacrifices of the men and women who have made our military the strongest military operation in the world. Accordingly, the mayor has here and to set his hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed, Roy West, Mayor, March 5, 2024. And we'll see who will be Commander of American Legion Post 817, Cliff Guillory.
And also Ms. Cheryl Williams, the state.
And our adjutant, Ms. Cheryl Williams.
All righty, y'all, look right here, and one, two, and three. Perfect, perfect. All right, you can come on up.
Good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, and to Mayor West, esteemed members of City Council, and honored guests, it is with great pride and gratitude that I stand before you today to accept this proclamation celebrating the birthday of the American Legion. As a representative of our local post, Dory Miller, Post 817, I am deeply humbled in the recognition from the City Council. The American Legion holds a special place in the hearts of countless Americans, standing as a beacon of service, patriotism, and community. For over a century, it has served our nation's veterans, their families, and our communities with unwavering dedication and selfishness. This proclamation not only honors the rich history and noble mission of the American Legion, but also serves as a testament to the enduring spirit of service that defines our city. It reaffirms our collective commitment to supporting those who have served our country and highlights the importance of honoring their sacrifices. On behalf of the American Legion, I would like to express our sincere gratitude to the City Council for this meaningful recognition. It serves as a reminder of the individual partnerships between our organization and the local community as we continue to work together to unfold this freedom, democracy, and service. Thank you once again for the City of Beaumont for this honor. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Next, we have an update from Lauren Monet, Communication Director, and it's always good to have you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We're excited to be back with the announcements for the week of March 5. Shoot some hoops and have a ball because the Coed Youth Basketball League registration is open now through March 17. Tryouts for the six-week session will take place on March 23 with brackets for ages 8 through 13. Contact the Sterling Pruitt Center for more information. The Rec Department is also hosting a Coed Youth 3-on-3 basketball tournament, April 5 and 6. Registration ends March 22, and you can sign up in person at the Sterling Pruitt Athletic Center at 2930 Gulf Street. Save the date for the city's annual free Easter egg hunt on March 23 at Magnolia Park at 11:00 AM. No need to sign up, just show up with your basket and have fun. The park's dashboard has been updated for March with a new playground at Combes Park and the Dog Park at Rogers Park close to completion. We're very excited and know you are, too. 311 is your quickest way to get solutions to non-emergency city issues. Use it to report sewer problems, water leaks, potholes, and more, straight from your phone by dialing 311 or downloading our free app. We use the reports to track issues and monitor trends, so please help us help you by letting us know what's going on in your neighborhood anytime there's an issue. A friendly reminder about Animal Care's free spay and neuter program. Residents can get one free voucher per year with an ID and utility bill with a Beaumont address. Their youth summer kennel assistance program is also now accepting applications for grades 10 through 12, and they're always in need of community volunteers and fosters if you're looking for ways to get involved. Visit our website for more information. The city's biannual surplus auction will be open from March 13 through 27. Anyone can browse and bid on items by searching City of Beaumont at ReneBates.com. And now I'll quickly turn it over to our friends Dean Conwell, Mindai, and Jay Muzak for a few words about Mural Fest.
City Council members, Mayor, how are you guys doing? We wanted to come back, give you guys a kind of a debrief of the festival. I wanted you guys to get information on based on what the City of Beaumont invested into. Based on just foot traffic alone, last year, we were trying to getting close to 15,000. This year, between two years, we're somewhere between 21,000 and 23,000 between the two days. Saturday was easily over 12,000 foot traffic coming in. Every vendor, from food vendors to all local vendors, completely sold out on Saturday, which drives a, it's not just an impact over time, but the economic impact itself of the festival. As far as the reach, social reach, last year, I think with the CVV limit, it was already pushing about 10 million. This year, before the festival has ended, we're already hitting over 8 million. And this is with the fest, artists still painting and finishing. This year alone, you can see that we have 17 new murals. Nature Trail has been added into part of the program for Mural Fest. We are going to finish the entire trail. There's 40 cubes that's being painted, museum. It's going to take, so we're going to have all over dedicated areas for it in downtown. I just want to get a chance to thank you guys as far as allowing us opportunity for year three, having the backing of the city was really, really supportive with the public. And the talent that we brought in was, I think, unmatched for a lot of the festivals out there. And with the feedback from the artists, I wanted to let Jay get a chance to kind of tell you guys what their experience with Beaumont is.
Yeah, thank you again, and really a deep heartfelt thank you from all the artists, myself as a curator, kind of organizing everyone, for everyone, public and private, that supported this in any way, big or small. Really thank you for preserving creative space in your community here in Beaumont. It's always a pleasure for me to come back and assist in that regard. The artists had an excellent time. Be sure that they're going back to their countries, Australia, Austria, Spain, all across the US, and singing the praises of what a great place Beaumont is. So like Min said, it's not only the murals that will last for years, decades to come, and that have created memories. And actually, a young child at the festival that we caught calling them miracles, little mural miracles, all over town. There's a really a narrative and a story behind every piece. So a lot of the artists came and they absorbed the Beaumont love and hospitality that was bestowed upon them. They put that into their work. They worked as hard as they possibly could, and I think the final product really shows. So again, just thank you for this great collaboration, and I hope to keep it up next year.
Just a few words. These two guys are true rock stars. It's an awesome public-private event. I really do want to thank our marketing team, especially Christina, who is in Houston today. I think she said she worked over 102 hours last week, so that's another average week for her. Also, some of the other city departments were so helpful, communications, police, fire, and we appreciate your support, too, because it really adds a lot to the landscape of this city. So thank you all.
Well, and before you walk off, I want y'all to come up and get a picture, because it was a magnificent event. It was Miracle Murals.
All righty, y'all, look right here, one, two, and three. Perfect, perfect. Thank you, guys.
And I hope everybody had a chance to get out there. If you didn't, you're going to still see the beautiful murals all over town, and Beaumont is just becoming more and more beautiful. We've got a bunch of beautiful citizens already making a big difference with great hearts, and now people are able to drive through our city and see the beautiful work. And this is unique. I mean, you go other places in the country, for too long, there's nobody going to be touching Beaumont, Texas, which is the way it ought to be. So thank y'all very much. And for those that are here for proclamations and recognitions, and this is the time that you can leave, so feel free, and we thank you for coming, but you're also welcome to stay. All right, now we're going to have public comments, and this is a time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda, which I'm going to mention later, where you have removed item E from the consent agenda. Any regular agenda items, 1 through 5, and you may also speak on any matter of public concern. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to come to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state. We would appreciate, we ask that you keep your statements to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
David Pete, 6355 Chin Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
David Pete, 6355 Chin Lane, Beaumont, Texas. I want to address something here. I know you've covered this before concerning the cameras throughout the city. And you have here on your agenda today where you're going to be requesting authorization to approve $89,548 for state and local cybersecurity and grant program. Now, I've questioned, I called many times to ask about the cameras, where the cameras are, how they're operating, what is the function, what is the budget for these cameras? I know that Rogers Park had received new cameras along with the pavilion and the dog parks and everything, and also Alice Keaton has the cameras. But what I got from the IT department, I think this microphone is low, what I got from the IT department is that the cameras, they are not cameras, they are monitors, and they are not recorders. They don't record. And so that concerns me, why we're spending so much money on cameras and these other things here, and they're not being utilized properly for what they're intended for. So I need the council to explain why do we still have these objects over these traffic lights? And I was told a long time ago, they were just props. I thought they were cameras, but they're not. So if the city is spending money to utilize something that's not usable, why are we wasting money on that? We need to be making sure that the money is being put in the places that it's needed. I've also brought the question about cameras being placed in all of the parks. We've had some occurrences of theft and unfortunate murders in the city, and so these cameras would be very beneficial. But yet, we're still spending money on things, and there's no explanation in how they're being used. So that concerns me, and it should concern you as well as council members, because you are the gatekeepers of these things. And so you need to make sure that money's being spent properly, and the uses for it is being done properly. So that's why I need to understand what's going on with these cameras. Why are they in certain places and why are they not in certain places? And if so, what is the budget? How much money is being spent on this? Are you spending money to make sure these things are monitored? And who's monitoring it? Is it the city? Is it private? What is it? We need answers to these questions, so we understand when we're driving or where we at, we know there's eyes looking, and we can feel a bit more safer in the city than just driving around and seeing all these things, and they're not operational, and it's only concentrated in one area, and that concerns me. Praise God. So I said, praise God, amen. But it concerns me because I'm concerned about the people.
Thank you.
So you should be concerned about the people as well.
Thank you.
Jason Marshburn, 1070 Monterey Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. I didn't realize you were going to withdraw a letter E from the consent agenda. That's what I came here for. Was that be on a later meeting or agenda place? Well, mainly, I came here, I'm a number of half-glass-half-full kind of person, so, but I am kind of apprehensive to say how valuable this is right now. I would like to be more in the loop on how much rent would be charged or the other mandates, not just gray water. I understand the gray water dump is part of the proposal to build a food truck park, but will electricity be part of it, too? A 50-amp service for each trailer? These are questions I have, and I'm not really sure, because seven is in the drawing, seven trucks, and I think maybe two at the most, because normally, you know, 60, 80 guests a day is about the break-even point for each trailer ordinarily, but I would like to see what the rent would be and where the rent is. Does the rent going to be in a separate enterprise fund, just used for the park? Will it be in the general fund? What's provided? Is electricity provided? In addition, maybe dumpsters provided? I understand gray water disposal is provided, and freshwater, I guess, is provided, too. I'd like to, you know, be more involved in, and then look what's going on before we, you know, put this on the agenda, if y'all let me know. I got a few experience in that area.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to remind people that oftentimes I read that at the beginning is we can't respond to those questions at this time. So, but thank you for bringing them, and we will have someone from staff get with you, and we will address those.
The Pharaoh Richard, 5275 Parkview Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. I just have a simple question. I do welfare checks on the homeless people around some other place, and a week ago, one of the ladies expressed concern for their lives. They felt like someone was trying to hit them and run over them or harm them. So my question only is, we had three pedestrian fatalities. My question is, is it because of a lack of sidewalks? Is it a lack of crosswalks? But are these three deaths related? MLK, Lucas, and Magnolia, three people died. It's to my understanding that the speed limit should be about, what, 35? I'd have to look that up. But that's very concerning to me, that three pedestrians were struck and killed, and now a homeless man was found dead yesterday, sitting up. So my only concern is, we have lost at least 20 homeless people within the last two years. They are people, too. They are God's children, too. And yes, they do suffer from things that most of us don't suffer from, so we should thank God for that. But I would hope that these three fatalities are not related, because when my uncle was killed on College, there was misinformation that was given about his death, as well as the homeless man that was killed two weeks prior on College Street. None of these streets have sidewalks. None of these streets have a crosswalk. But I do know that on Dialin' and Feeling, there is one with a timer. So with the 50 million surplus, can we consider bringing some things for safety to Ward 4 and the other wards? We pay taxes, not just the West, but all the citizens of Beaumont, Texas should have an equal distribution of funds for safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, City officials, Addie Allen. I'm standing here because last year, I talked about sidewalks in front of Beaumont United, and I was told that there was a grant that had been applied for. I would like to know what the status of that is, just tagging what the young lady just said, it's important. I was driving down my street or in the neighborhood, and I still noticed children from Amelia Elementary School. The streets on Landis have been paved, but at the same The streets on Landis have been paved, but at the same time, no sidewalks were added. That's a travesty. And they play with each other. And I would hate to know that because there has not been anything done about sidewalks, those kids should not walk in the ditch, even senior citizens like myself in the neighborhood of Amelia. We have to, you know, pledge of allegiance, stand in the ditch when cars are coming back. And I pay taxes, I shouldn't have to stand in a ditch to wait for a car to pass me by. So I would just really appeal to you to do something. And now that it's March 5th, I hope that everybody will do something, go out and vote. We voted for each of you to do something for us, and this is our time to do something to make sure that we have people that listen to us. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Is there a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda, removing item number E?
Move to approve excluding item E.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Turner.
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to take the time out to compliment council and staff on how aggressive it's been as far as going after grants. I'm starting to see a lot of grant applications come through, and I think it's important that we take advantage of that free possible revenue that's out there to kind of benefit some things for the city. I'm starting to see them come through on the agenda more often, and I just want to let you guys know, I appreciate it. As a council, that's something we talked about in our strategic plan, and I'm starting to see this come to fruition. As Ms. Addie said earlier, we just want to make sure we follow up and get a community updates on the progress of the grants. We may not get all of them, but the truth is, we just need to be applying and being aggressive, because something is always better than nothing. So thank you.
Yes, Councilman Durio.
Yes, can I get, I guess, Dean to explain item F and G as far as the signage and what exactly that's going to be, and the different outside activities for the Cat Tail Marsh?
Sure. There are two different grants. We're requesting from the Jefferson County Tourism Commission. They're not matching grants, but the first one is for some better signage to direct people to the nature center and also to Cat Tail Marsh. Right now, we have some signage, but also we have some of those little just stick-in signs that don't look very appealing. But that's the main reason for that. The other is like an education area in the back for Cat Tail Marsh, like a playground with a STEM research. There's like five or six different items that we want to purchase, and we hopefully will have those installed. At Cat Tail Marsh, the equipment by next summer, but the signage for directional signage at Cat Tail Marsh, I mean, at Terrell Park, to lead people to the nature center in Cat Tail Marsh, hopefully that could be installed within four to six months.
All right, thank you, Dean.
You bet.
There's no other discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. Assistant City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council, consider a resolution approving the repair of a Caterpillar DAT bulldozer for use on the landfill. This comes with a recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. Assistant City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two, please?
Council, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of one primary recirculation pump replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. This comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number two. Any discussion? Councilman Durio?
I noticed in the, I guess, the background, said two of those three pumps are out of service, and I was just wondering, why are we just trying to replace one instead of replacing both of them?
And we've got Mike Harris coming up. Mr. Harris, excuse me.
Councilman Durio, we had originally three pumps in place. The pumps are a 15 MGD pump, a 10 MGD pump, and a 5 MGD pump. The 5 MGD pump was taken out of service about maybe five to six years ago, because it was not needed. What we do need, two pumps, basically for redundancy. When the other pump went out of service, that's where we're looking at replacing it, because we still have one pump in operation. But these pumps keep the trickling filter media wet to where the good bacteria can continue to grow. And if we get to a point where we have low flow and this media dries out, then it could cause treatment problems.
So by getting this one fixed, then we'll have two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. Assistant City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three, please?
Council, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Texas Drainage, Inc. of Waller, Texas, for the citywide ditching program Phase 2A. This comes with a recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Turner.
Boy, can you kind of talk to the company that we did select? Have we worked with them before? And I see some bids were filed a little bit more than theirs. Are we, you know, confident that we're going to get in the right direction without too many interruptions?
Yes, sir. This company pretty much specializes in ditching, and they're the ones who completed phases 1A and 1B for us, did a great job, and so we're glad to see them bid on this aggressively.
And I think that's good, that the community understand they work with us. That's why I asked the question. The second thing was, can you kind of explain the purpose of the citywide ditching program and why we're going in that direction?
Yes, sir. The ditches across the city had fallen behind in their maintenance, and so this program is intended to restore the proper grade line of all of the ditches throughout the city over a five-year period. So we're through each phase, one through five, we're looking to complete 20% of the ditches within each ward. In addition to doing the ditches, we also assess the grade of the culverts, and if they're three inches or more out of grade, then we'll take them out and replace them at grade, and then fix whatever was on top of them. So we've completed 1A and 1B. This'll award 2A, and we're just about done with the plans for 2B. We finished the surveying, so that'll go out for bid later this year. And I guess I should say too, all of this is on the website in terms of our progress. So there's a nice map on there that lists all of the phases, the individual streets that are done, and it maps out and color codes the work to be finished on an upcoming basis, as well as everything that's been completed.
All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. Assistant City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four, please?
Council, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of furniture for the Real-Time Crime Center. This comes with a recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number four?
So move for approval? Second.
There has been a motion in a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? Councilman Getz.
The Real-Time Crime Center, is that going to be something, I think I know the answer is, in connection with the FUSIS camera system?
Captain Austin, check.
I thought so, and there were some questions about the FUSIS camera system and how exactly it operates. Could you explain a little bit about how that is to answer some questions on that?
Specifically to FUSIS?
Yeah, you know, optical scanners on top of traffic lights, that's not part of the FUSIS camera system, but my understanding is that it does capture some images and allows not only to retrieve, but to see things in real time. Is that correct?
We have a lot of, tied in a lot of our active cameras in our systems, and we're in the process of trying to get partnerships with various organizations around the city, even residential homes for access to cameras. Some of it's just telling us that they have a camera. Some of it's actually being able to use FUSIS to connect the ability to view it on one screen, instead of having to go to different siloed approaches.
And where can citizens go to learn more information about this program and how it's supposed to work?
We have a Beaumont Connect. I think the address is connectbeaumonttx.org right now, where people can start signing up. We weren't advertising it real big, because we're hoping to do that in a more functional, maybe, presentation, a little more showy, with the right people there. But we are starting to register people. So far, we've registered, I think, 577 cameras, and we've added about a little over 500 in our system, around 540 or something like that in our system, just off of different things, like our in-car cameras from Axon, some of the city facility cameras and so forth.
All right. And I'm just wanting to be able to have citizens have a website or something that they can look at, so they can understand, that's 1,000 cameras or more that you just talked about, that will all be integrated in a manner in which, from the Real-Time Crime Center, if something is happening out there in the field, we will be able to see that, and the officers will be able to know what they're going into and what they're facing, or possibly track criminals as they flee. At least that's the way I understand it. Is that all accurate?
Yes, FUSIS, you can Google FUSIS, F-U-S-I-S, and get some information about how FUSIS works. There's not a lot of information about how our program is building out, as much as like if you want to look at, like, Connect Atlanta. They've been on board for a couple of years now, and they've got quite a few more people registered, and there's some information out there, but basically, getting the program started now, and before we get, we wanted to have the basis before we start bringing on everybody.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council, consider a resolution to authorize the city manager or his designee to apply for and receive funding in an amount not to exceed $89,548 through the state and local cybersecurity grant program. This comes with a recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number five?
So moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Durio.
So I was looking at this last night and playing around with my calculator again, and that 10% match doesn't look right, as far as the math goes. 10% of 89,548 was 89, $8,954, and they got 9,948.
And our technologies director is coming forward, Mrs. Wright?
Actually, our grants person who is putting together the grant, she's the one that calculated the required local match. So I actually cannot answer that question.
I think the 10% local match is of the total project, and if you add the 9,948 to the 89,549...
Correct.
You would come up with the 100%, and they took 10% of that and subtracted it.
Okay.
Correct. The 89,548 is what we're expecting from the grant, and then the 10% match is the 9,948 added together is what the total project cost would be.
All right, thank you.
And for clarity, this isn't directly associated with FUSIS. This is for our other technology and infrastructure.
This is strictly for cybersecurity. So FUSIS would be more public safety, physical security. This is cybersecurity. So this is your cyber attacks, your phishing emails, your ransomware, that type of thing. It's not the same. I don't...
Well, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. Assistant City Manager, would you please take us into the work session?
Yes, Mayor. This is a work session to discuss and review amendments and changes to Chapter 24 of the City Code of Ordinances, and I will turn it over to our city attorney.
Good afternoon. So I'm going to be talking to you guys about plumbing and building stuff, because the guys on the second floor thought it'd be easier if I explained it with a pretty smile. So if you recall, we're just going to kind of walk through, and I'm going to ask Haley to pass these down for you, walk through what we did the last time we did a code adoption, probably last year. We started off this process, if you recall, there was a presentation in January of last year by an outside agency that came and talked to council prior to our code adoption. And then council, we staff worked shop this item with council. We did a town hall, you adopted the code in April, and then staff really did a really good job of kind of engaging the public, explaining to them what this looks like through several processes. And then now we're back at step seven, where we're going to workshop those changes to council, and then finally, we want to bring this back to you on March 19th at our next meeting for adoption. So again, on February 22nd, we hosted a town hall at the event center. The town hall focuses on those particular codes that are listed on the screen, but they had about 75 attendees. They also invited the Association of General Contractors to speak and to participate in that discussion. Everyone who works in that code, you see in the photo, that's our building official, our deputy building official, and our fire marshal were there to talk about the changes to the code and to address that, and it was a really good feedback amongst those individuals who have some buy-in with that. Just to recap, this is what we adopted. These are the codes that are now a part of our code. So it's quite a bit that we adopted that one time. The packet that we passed around is the Chapter 24 in its entirety. There are some cleanup red line languages in there, but the highlighted portions are what really changed. Next slide. So the other part is, after we adopted, staff went on a public education campaign. They appeared on the Dana Simmons Show in December to kind of discuss with realtors what some of those major changes would be, just because those people are kind of the closest that you get to the public on a basis in terms of home buying, home building. And they had that intimate conversation with them and invited feedback for their conversation. And then also, staff regularly hosts pre-development meetings on Thursday, and they are pointing out those different code changes at that time as well. In our community involvement process, staff has revived the Golden Triangle Inspectors Association. The association currently has about 30 active members, and they meet quarterly. They're looking to increase that to monthly as they grow and as they see necessary. They are also active on the Home Builders Association of Southeast Texas. Staff is an honorary board member. The association has about 77 active members, and they meet monthly at local restaurants around town. As I mentioned in your packet, there's some key, the key changes are highlighted to the code, but our deputy building official, as well as our building official, Beau Hansen and Boyd Myers, in the reverse order, are here. If you have... and Boyd Myers, in the reverse order, are here if you have specific questions about those key changes. I know nothing.
They're looking sharp, so we might need them just to come up here for that.
But I know nothing about code stuff, and I understood it. It's very minimal. So if you see the 21 is highlighted because we updated to the 24 uniform code. There's some very minute changes as relates to minimum requirements and stuff like that, but overall, very minor changes. Beau's nodding his head, so I'm doing a good job. If you need him, they're there. Lastly, one of the big questions that came up last time in the first presentation was, you know, ICO ratings and why that's important and why we need to be up to date on that. And so there are three things that come with ICO ratings. The first one is it ensures building quality, and it's important for obvious reasons. We want safe structures, and we also want our buildings to be, have fair market value. The mayor knows all about that as a realtor. The second part is insurance and disasters and insurance. FEMA has a minimum requirement, and they also require that we have the latest edition of the international codes to be met in order for us to receive fundings after a disaster event. And the ICO, which is Insurance Service Office, which I learned during this process, TDI, which is Texas Department of Insurance, and TWIA, which is Texas Windstorm Insurance Association, I should know that out on home, requires the 2018 codes for the best rates. And so in order for us to make sure that we're, you know, keeping up with this for our citizen, that was important that we adopt that as well. And then lastly, the state minimum codes, which is 2001 for IVC and ICR, 2015 for ICE and CC, and 2018 for ISP, SC, IPC, UPC, UMC, and IMC. Those are a lot of initials, but guess what? We adopted all of those and we're in compliance. That's all that matters. So the city is currently the leader in our area for code compliance and code certifications. So we are providing the best we can to do our part to make sure our citizens have solid ICO ratings and quality. So what do we need from you guys today? Basically, this process is just, again, to answer any questions and concerns council has about making those amendments to the code. It's important to point out that we already adopted the code. What we're asking is for the language to be included in our ordinance. This is already being enforced and already like happening. And so the second process is on March 19th. We'll come back with that language. I went ahead and printed the entire code, so you can see what the entire code looks like. And as you'll notice, there's very little yellow highlights, which means there are very little changes to the code post-adoption. But that's what we'll look for you guys to do on the 19th. And then post that, staff will continue to be engaged with the public. They'll continue to be active in those associations. They'll continue to reach out to the public and have that dialogue so that we can continue to have a good repertoire between development and business owners and homeowners who want to improve to their home. And before we jump into questions, I do want to just kind of point out to council that the administration, under the direction of this council, asks that staff be more transparent and be more engaging with the public. And I just want to commend our building official and our deputy building official, Boyd Meyer and Beau Hanson, on all the things that they did to make this process viable. They invited questions from contractors and from builders and from realtors, and they wanted to make the transition and the wording of the code easily to understand and an easy process and transition. So they are doing their part to make sure that Beaumont is a fun place to work, but also easy to do business with. So hats off to those gentlemen.
And that's a fantastic presentation, so thank you for that. Yes, and y'all might, we might need some.
It's your turn.
Some help to answer Councilman Turner's inquiry and others that may follow.
First of all, Mr. Boyd, I do want to shout you out. I had a citizen come to me last week, and he was confused. He didn't know what direction to go in, and he said you were very professional and helpful. So it's real good to hear, you know, coming from citizens that our city is customer service friendly and we're moving in the right direction. So I did want to thank you for that. It felt good for him to come up to me and say that. Normally, he's the one that complains, so that kind of caught me off guard. So you did a good job. Some things, since I've been on the council, and since we're talking about codes, I kind of want to bring this up. You see some other cities, some restaurants and things like that, just starting to do these kind of things. And I want to know, with our new codes, would it allow these things to happen? I'll give you an example. You have restaurants who have these windows that you can open up, and you can open up the windows of the restaurant similar to Raising Canes on College Street. You can actually open up the window while you're eating and dining. Would these codes kind of give our restaurant owners the flexibility to kind of do some of these more progressive things?
That question impacts multiple departments. Health Department probably being the biggest one, which is not my area expertise. But, you know, what I'm looking at for that is the energy code and things of that nature, to make sure when those doors are rolled up that the space is still comfortable and the mechanical systems aren't caused to be strained in that situation. But yeah, that's multiple departments that are going to weigh into that. But for us, yes, the codes, the 2021's codes speak to more unique situations like that in general.
I appreciate that. Another one that was similar to restaurant owners is the plugs in restaurants. You're starting to see like the USB ports and plugs now, like where you're sitting at the table, you can actually, you know, use a USB port to charge your phone. Even with some of these codes, is this something, like you said, now speaking more in detail, is this something that you can kind of now start to see in restaurants?
There are minimums, but most of that stuff, like phone ports, USB C and all those ports, those are preference for the owners. They're not necessarily identified in the code.
And I just want to point out, our code is based on like what the minimum requirement is. Some of the things that are over and beyond in terms of ports at the table or specific designs wouldn't be impeded by the code because they're looking at minimum safety, minimum requirements to ensure that the building is sound and structurally safe. So the fancy things that you're talking about wouldn't be restricted by the base level things that are required.
Got you. And just the reason I'm asking, because I've dealt with, you know, restaurant owners and home builders, and these are some of the things they ask. And I think it's important to kind of discuss this since we're kind of on the topic. Another one that came up, because I wrote them all down, was the modern flat roofs. We have them on restaurants, but, you know, restaurants and gas stations and shopping strips, but homeowners, they're asking, could this be something that we can look towards?
Yes, there's several. I mean, they're going to have to maintain, I think, 2% slope is the minimum, but most of those roofs of that nature, you're going to have an engineer involved or design professional involved to work through the entire process. So yes, that's all detailed in the code.
Got you. That's great. And the last thing, a plumber called me before we came in. I don't know if this is accurate, so I mean, you can correct me, because he said this, the way the shower drains, you drain it in the middle. And he, someone was saying, these newer homes, they want the drains to maybe go towards the front or the back. Does it have to go in the middle? I don't know if it's accurate, but I said I'll ask, yeah.
Can I get back to you on that?
Of course, of course. I definitely appreciate that.
I'll pay in, and I'm not sure I can accurately answer that.
Okay, but again, I do want to say I appreciate you guys. I did get a compliment, and I said again, this is a guy who doesn't normally compliment. So, yeah, I really had a good job impressing him. So thank y'all for the updates and coming up here and answering some of these questions. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Getz?
Also want to throw out a compliment that I received today from a citizen who went in, got to get a permit, said y'all were very helpful to him, and I appreciate that as well. My question is, there was conversation in the past about changing from International Plumbing Code to the Uniform Plumbing Code. There was concern expressed back then about how that would integrate with the family of international codes. Now we've had some time to digest that. How's all that working out in the field and in the office as well?
It's worked out easier than we anticipated. One of the reasons why, it's really common to have reference standards in the codes, NFPA, UL listings, even ICC has their own reference standards. If you're going to do grandstands or bleachers, there's a specific breakout reference standard for that. So what we did, and you can see this in the language that we provided y'all, what we did is we basically treated the International Plumbing Code as a reference standard. So when all the interlacing codes reference the International Plumbing Code, we can refer to that. And then the adopted Plumbing Code of Beaumont is the Uniform Plumbing Code. So we're able to basically utilize both when prescribed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Looking sharp.
Thanks.
There's no other discussion. I'll close the work session. And at this point is the time for comments from our council and staff. And I will start over with Councilman Duria.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to, just a few things. We found out about those cameras that Mr. Pete was talking about as far as, are they props? Do they record? I'm pretty sure we don't have traffic ticket cameras in Beaumont, do we? But I know I've seen cameras at intersections before, and they also have those. They might think they're cameras, the opticon system. They kind of look like cameras, but those are for the emergency vehicles. But if we could check into that. Also, the food park drawing, if I'm not mistaken, that's a proposal from the Chamber of Commerce. That's not actually something that we voted on yet or decided. So we're not into even planning it right now. That's an idea brought forth by the Chamber of Commerce, which I think is a good idea. We might get to it, but we're not at that, we're not at that stage in it yet, just for Mr. Marshborne's information. And, well, okay. Also, there are sidewalks on most of the main streets in Ward 4. And as far as the one in front of Beaumont United, we didn't get the grant, but we're doing it anyway, and it's in the planning stages right now. And I think Bart, you said it should be done sometime later this year?
We're going to strive to have it done by the end of the fiscal year. It may, the last part of the construction may bleed over into next fiscal year, but it should be substantially done this year.
Okay. Okay. And also, can I get, do most of the main streets in Beaumont or have crosswalks for people to walk across? I mean, when I ride through Beaumont, I see crosswalks.
It varies. We do have some older style across the city that'll have a button, but not pet heads. But on MLK, for example, that's a state highway, and it does have crosswalks with pedestrian crossings on it.
And I think we also do have a sidewalk plan for the city, and starting off as far as putting sidewalks around schools. So we do have that plan in place.
We didn't fund the master plan this year, but we are working towards making some improvements.
Okay. Congratulations, charades to you and your fraternity, sorority, I'm sorry, your sorority, shero. And also, congratulations to the American Legion. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Getz?
Today is election day. If you haven't voted early, I encourage everybody to go out and vote today. It's your right, it's your duty, and hope you exercise that. With regard to the food truck park, I do think we have it in our community improvement plan, but not to be funded until next year. And today's grant was tabled because it apparently requires a match that we don't have budgeted right now. So maybe we can apply for that grant next year when we do have some funding. Is that right, Mr. Assistant City Manager, that we can look at? Okay. And as far as two food trucks, which Mr. Marshborne suggested today, I don't think two is enough to have a food truck park. We need to have more than that. But we do need to, when we get closer to doing this, probably have a meeting of food truck operators to make sure we address their concerns and get information from them because they're the ones in the trenches that need to actually be able to have an understanding of what we're going to be doing in terms of a commissary, in terms of grease traps, in terms of electricity, in terms of water supply. How much of that will be city obligations or city providing that? How much is the rent going to be? All of these things are important components for a successful food truck park. But I'm just going to go out there and say this. I do think that if we put a food truck park, as demonstrated in the drawings that are out there now, courteously provided by Jay's Landscaping through the Beaumont Chamber of Commerce, that shows a food truck park in the lower parking lot behind City Hall, right on the shores of the Nature's River. And boats would be able to pull up. It would also encompass a bandstand, a bar where you could buy beer and wine. It would be very similar in many respects to the Nature's Wheelhouse, which is wildly popular down in Port Natures. There's no doubt in my mind that that would certainly draw people downtown. It would be something that people would go to. Food truck parks are crazy popular in other parts of the state, and we are missing it by not having here in Beaumont. So we want to pursue that as well. I'm thankful that the dog park at Rogers Park is almost finished. All that we need to do now is get some grass in there, and the dogs will have a place to run off-leash, be able to be exercised. And it's not just for dogs. Dog parks are also allowing people to come together, people that have a common interest, being their dogs. So it's a place for people to socialize, and Rogers Park is a good place for a dog park because there's so many apartments, so many townhouses where people don't have yards, and they can, you know, take their dogs over to the dog park to exercise. Last thing I want to talk about is sidewalks around schools. You know, there's been talk for many years, going back to when Gett Wright was on council, about getting sidewalks over on Fennett Road in front of what was Sino's and now Beaumont United. And of course, they already have a sidewalk on one side of the road, but, you know, we're now looking at putting a sidewalk on both sides. I have to continue to call attention to the fact that we have another high school in Beaumont besides Beaumont United, Beaumont Westbrook. And I happen to live on Phelan Avenue, so I can see every single afternoon and every single morning how many children have to walk without the benefit of a sidewalk from all the apartments and townhouses that exist around Dallin and Phelan. It's a lot of kids that have to walk from that distance without a sidewalk. We need to absolutely think about in the next funding cycle, funding sidewalks to allow from Major Drive all the way up to Dallin, because there's no sidewalks on either side of the road there, except for where there's been some new construction that has required sidewalks to be built because it's new construction. We can piece together the parcels of land that have had sidewalks already built, so that we're not building the whole stretch, but adding in sidewalks along those tracts of land that were built out before there was a requirement to put sidewalks, and so that the kids at Westbrook can also have the ability to have sidewalks as they have to walk to school. They'll be able to walk safely. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Duria, you had something else?
Oh, yeah. I just wanted folks to know, last week, you know, we had had AstroTurf or artificial turf donated to the city to put down at Sprat Park. And we had had some that had been there for a while, which was not the actual turf. It was padding, and most of that was put down. But we started getting delivery of the actual turf to go down less than two weeks ago. And last week, somebody set some of it on fire out there at Sprat Park. But it was the first of five or six loads that we're going to get. So I'm confident that we will be able to complete this project. We'll figure it out. It was a very suspicious fire. Just saying that as a citizen and as a retired firefighter, it's nothing out there that could set that stuff on fire. But I'm confident that our fire department, if it was arson fire, they'll find out what happened and bring those folks to justice. But I just hate that that happened. It is a setback, but something that we will recover from, and I feel we will get that project finished. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Turner?
And I encourage any citizen that lives in the area, if you see something, say something. It's not often we get things like this to take care of our youth, and we really have to protect our community and our neighborhood. So it's important, if you see something, you definitely need to say something. To speak on, I want to thank Councilman Chris Duria and my guests for addressing some of the comments that citizens asked earlier. I think it's important that we actually answer the questions and focus on their concerns, and y'all brought all that up. One thing that's a big concern of mine is the food truck ordinance and special events ordinances. I think we kind of need to look at revisiting them due to.
I think we kind of need to look at revisiting them due to some of the instances we had with food trucks as well as our special events. I'm pretty sure the city attorney can figure out some strategic ways and show the council how we can be a little bit more beneficial and festival friendly, because one thing in Beaumont, most of our festivals and special events always have sold out crowds. Be a little friendly, but also still firm and make sure we're protecting the health of our citizens. I want to shout out one of our own, Miles Hanes. He was dancing with the Stars on Friday, he shined. So I appreciate you, good luck, Miles. Thank you for repping the city of Beaumont. Mural Fest, I think it's important, I do say this, prior to having Mural Fest, I had a council member from Waco who actually physically came down to see how he put on Mural Fest and what all took forward, as well as Fort Worth and Dallas, in Dallas, Texas area. Both of these cities are thriving and growing in population. So I think it's extremely important to know that right here in Beaumont, Texas, these cities chose to come here and look at what we did and see how they can model and implement it in their cities. So that goes to show, eyes are on us in Beaumont. If we keep pushing, doing different things, keep thriving, hopefully we can get to that population growth that those areas are seeing as well. I want to shout out Abi Love Basketball League. They had roughly 150 games over six weeks. They gave our youth something positive to do in the community. Lamar Women's Basketball Team, they were crowned the conference champs, and at one point this year, they were ranked top 25 in the nation. That's huge because it's right here in Beaumont, Texas. I don't feel like we compliment and talk about Lamar as often as we should. The mayor, you go to a lot of the games, so I see you on social media, but really shout out to Lamar Women's Basketball Team. And hopefully, as a council, we can kind of get them in here soon and do something to highlight them and show them we appreciate the hard work and dedication. Now, since we're on basketball, we want to talk about Beaumont United as well. They're headed to their fourth state possible title. One thing, this has never been done in the history of Beaumont, and this team in four years have went four years in a row. And we just want to get the community to get behind them, rally behind them, pray over those kids, and make sure kids and coaches go out there and perform to the highest magnitude. So if we can get behind them, appreciate it. Whether your share posts show up, they'll highly appreciate it. Lastly, Dallin West, Councilmember Mike Getz let me speak in his absence, and they were really engaged. They asked a lot of questions, they were really concerned about the work going on in that area. Mike Harris done a good job giving information and letting them know when some of these projects will be completed. So thank you for that. And the Northland Neighborhood Association, that one was a pretty tough meeting. A lot of people in that community, I understand they're hurt, I understand their concern, I understand their frustration, but I want to thank them for showing up. Out of all the neighborhood associations I've been to, that's probably right now, it's been the most well-attended, and it's pretty consistent, and they don't mind voicing their opinion. So I encourage all citizens to keep on talking to us. If we don't know how you feel, we can't listen and we can't help you. As elected official, it's often we like to hear the good conversations, but sometimes you got to man up and be able to have the tough ones as well. So I'm going to bring those concerns up, and I'm going to work with staff and see if we can get some of their concerns addressed. Thank you.
Councilman Fellshaw?
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilman Getz said, election day, just please get out and vote, and remember the polls are open till 7:00 PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Samuel?
I would like to also say congratulations to Lamar University Women's Basketball Team, and I look forward to us expressing our appreciation to them for their success. And I think it was a wonderful weekend. The Mural Fest was a great success. We're continuing to shine in southeast Texas in showing what can be done with public-private partnerships. And I think it was wonderful, and it's going to get better.
Thank you. No comment, Mayor. Miss, Madam City Attorney?
I'll do Taylor's comments. I got it. So first, Councilman Turner, you mentioned that you wanted to see something from our office. Are you requesting a work session? Are you going to just send an email so that we can get clarity on what you want from our office?
Well, I would ask if I can get a, see what you guys can come up with, maybe I can get a second for a work session for it to be presented. I highly appreciate that.
Got it.
On the food?
We'll take it for request. Taylor?
So it is done. Got it. Next, I'd like to say congratulations to Miles. I watched the video, he did do a good job. So I want to say publicly, even though you lost, we are still proud of you. We are still proud of you, you did a great job. You lost to some very worthy opponents. You know, it's just kind of hard to compete with Lee Porter and Rashawn doing hip hop and, you know. Rashawn Weblock and Lee Porter won the popular vote. And then Paul Trevino and Jane, is it Jane? Lejay won the mural ball. So they, they were the better dancers.
Wow.
We're very proud, we're very proud of Miles. Very proud of Miles. Also, Mural Fest, it's been said multiple times, but I don't think people really understood the impact. It was a beautiful, beautiful event. So thank you to Men and Jay for their vision for doing that, all the building owners who brought property in downtown specifically for the purpose of putting a mural on it. That was amazing. And then Christina and the CDB, and all they did to make that possible. And all the events that they hosted leading up, they did a lot of things to just kind of encourage people to be there and to participate. So that was, that was incredible, and I'm grateful to have that in our city as well. And then I also want to thank my lovely love of Sarah's, Adel Segman, they'd Incorporated, for showing up in red and blessing the city of Beaumont with their presence and their service, and all the amazing things that they do for Women's History Month and all the months beyond. And lastly, today is my favorite district attorney's birthday, so happy birthday to Keith Giblin.
All right.
Oh, lastly, to Lamar, because I can't do this. AJ mentioned it, but we actually have two girls on that team that are local. Like one played for Beaumont United, one played for Westbrook, and I've had the pleasure of watching Cam and JC play since they were little dribblers, and it's just amazing to see what they've done, what they've done with that women's basketball program at Lamar. Women's sports is hugely underrated, but we have an amazing, amazing talent at Lamar. So congratulations to them.
I had a couple to follow up on. The traffic cameras that are at the intersections are there, they're a more modern version of what used to be the ground loop sensors to detect whether there's a car at the intersection or not. So the way they're set up is that the technician sets up the camera and stores an image of the intersection without any vehicles there, so that when a car or a truck comes into the frame, the equipment can see that there's something there that needs part of the signal service. It's primarily used to judge how long the signal should run, whether left turn lanes should be indicated or not. Those are not recorded. We don't have video from them, but they're solely there for the purpose of regulating the traffic at the intersection. I'll speak a little bit for IT on the cameras in the parks. Those are similar to the ones that are on the city buildings. They are recorded. They're not monitored minute by minute, but they are recorded, and they're generally kept for a 30-day rolling period, so they can be referenced.
Thank you. Mr. Assistant City Manager?
Mayor, thank you. So at the risk of being redundant, I would like to also echo the appreciation for a really good public-private partnership with Mural Fest. I went out each day, and each day was a very impressive festival. So shout out to Men Day, Jay and his team, but also, I know Dean Conwell, Christina Loke, but also the other departments. A lot of departments worked to make that a success. So Emily Wheeler and her group, of course, police and fire, and some other departments went into making that happen. So it was just a really, a great, a great event. So, and I would like to congratulate Miles. I don't consider that you lost, I consider you just, you just didn't win, that's all.
Miles, just ignore her.
Control her mic, that's right.
Miles, congratulations, just don't listen to Shereen. Shh. Congratulations, Miles. That's all I have.
This City Manager, June Ellis?
Congratulations, Miles. Also want to congratulate Cheryl Ray. She has been promoted from the interim Chief Financial Officer, and she has been made permanent Chief Financial Officer, so congratulations. Also, the fiscal year 2023 audit, we're in the very final stages of completing the audit. Actually, in two weeks, we'll be bringing the final audit to city council for your approval as you do each, each year. We've also started working on the five-year community investment plan. That's a plan that's updated annually. We will start meeting internally on projects for our CIP, and we've also started working on developing our proposed budget for fiscal year 2025. And like last year, we will be coming before council with work sessions on the CIP and the budget to get your feedback and input. The municipal court is offering its first-ever amnesty program for anyone with Class C misdemeanor violations within the Beaumont Municipal Court. That is scheduled from March 19th through April 2nd. Warrant fees, warrant fees would be removed during this two-week time period. On April 3rd, the city will have its warrant roundup. We haven't had one in about five years, I'm told, so that is scheduled for April 3rd. Anyone can pay their tickets by phone, in person, or online. Staff is also in the process of meeting, meeting with BISD to coordinate the date for the next joint meeting with them. It's been close to six months, so we're in the process of getting, getting those, getting that date scheduled. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. I've got a few things, but I do want to remind everybody, certainly us having experienced so many natural disasters in the fire, in the, with the fires in the Panhandle, the Smokehouse Creek Fire as of yesterday was at almost 11, 1.1 million acres, 1,700 square miles, and it's only 15% contained. It's, two people are confirmed dead from the fire, and lots of cattle, as well as a lot of homes. So we certainly, as a community, need to keep them in our prayers, and those that are able to offer any support, they're asking for support across the nation because it is affecting such a state the size of Wyoming burning up. I mean, Rhode Island, excuse me, that would have been really big, but it's not over.
Mayor, we do have a rescue unit. Chief White isn't here, but we did send one of our rescue units there Thursday, and they've been there over the weekend, so they are there participating in those efforts.
That's awesome. And not to be too redundant, Mural Fest, another incredible, got to meet with several of the artists and the stories behind there, but it is certainly making Beaumont more beautiful. The Abi Love Basketball League and the Upward Basketball League, I want to give shout-outs to them, both of them hugely successful. I know about probably 300 kids in each program, and which we're all about youth initiatives. Pioneering Women had their unveiling of the, this year's women beforehand in the lobby before city council, which was very nice, and certainly, congratulations to the two, the two different organizations that received the proclamations today. Additional information on Sprat Park that I had learned, Councilman Duria got hold of me, and I appreciate it, and I reached out to several people, but I, at this point, I think, is what Councilman Duria said, maybe 16% of the, of the artificial turf was affected. So we're going to, but we are going to figure out how to deliver a complete project out there, and certainly the organization that made the donations appreciative, and we're appreciative of them, they're bringing, they've got more to bring. I am throwing out the first pitch at Lamar softball game tonight, and we, they're on a winning streak. The men are got a bye in their first, in the, in the, in the conference tournament, and of course, the women won theirs, and Lamar is having an incredible athletic season across the board. BISD is chartering buses for the, for this weekend's game, so be sure to check their website and their Facebook page, because I know there's a lot of people that would like to go. And the one thing I'm going to finish up with, because I get a lot of calls on too, folks, Beaumont is booming. Progress is going to be a bit painful. You know, you go to large cities that are growing, there's road construction, there's other construction that occurs, and that's to support the infrastructure. And with our new interstate project that's coming through, which is going to be wonderful for, in the future, but we, you know, just remember, and I'd suggest to you to respond to people when you see things on social media, or when people say things, say Beaumont is booming, and, and yes, progress can be a little bit painful, but it is exactly what we want to see more of, and I expect it will be coming. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.